It's Monday night, it's August 19th, 7:00 in the evening. And tonight, we are in regular session. Our first item of business is to establish a quorum, and we are all here tonight. Welcome to everybody and returning members. Next item of business is disposition of the minutes for the regular session of City Council held on August 5th, 2019. For approval? And do we have a second?
Second.
We have motion and second for approval of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Minutes have been approved. The next item is communications. And I'll check with councilmembers first to see if anybody has communications. Councilmember Fall.
I've had several constituents talk to me about the change in the east-west school traffic and reduction of the parking spaces. Several people have been concerned about losing parking spaces and how it will be rectified for people who are on that street with the new parking and traffic patterns that will be going there. My suggestion would be that we would reduce the 24-hour parking requirement for a lot of people because now the puck in front of their houses are not going to be allowed. So I would like to work with city administration to be able to help people in those situations. That's kind of a question, too.
Okay. So, opposed, and you're reporting that people have commented in. And there was a press release today with a map identifying the parking spaces that have been reduced on Central Avenue. So, Mayor is here, and here's your query. Any other communications? Councilmember McGee.
Thank you, President. Nicely, I've had several people comment and ask me what the status of the vendor parking spaces is currently. And as we know, during the summertime, it's been kind of left empty for the main part. And we've had, the signs have not been changed at all to indicate that the public can park there on Sundays. And I know that's a big thing that people are curious about. But even more so, we went through a lot of discussion to get the current status where the vendors can pay monthly. And the question is, really, are those spots being paid for? Or are they, again, just having the signs prohibiting the public from parking there? So I don't know what to tell them. So, thank you.
So noted. Okay, thank you. Other councilmembers? Councilmember Cotsus.
President, nicely, thank you. I did, I have the opportunity that I'm going to be able to announce this two times prior to the Athens City School Board meeting, the next one on September 19th at 6:30 PM. I wanted to make note that this one, the Architect Schur and Associates will be present. They will be looking for input on the overall look of the buildings. And so they're looking for that public participation at that time.
I have a question with them. So the only public participation is at the school board meeting about the look of the building?
It'll also be presented to the employees of the school district. So those are the two places, yes.
Have they announced any sort of public meeting, hearing, work group for the different neighborhoods that this is going to go forward in?
I asked that question at the last Athens City School Board meeting, and they said that this is the, the public participation is to attend the school board meeting.
The school board meeting? Which is at 5:30?
6:30.
At the high school?
Yes.
Thank you. Not appropriate.
And any other communications at this point? And I'd suggest contacting the school board, yes.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other communications?
One other thing. I think that as liaison, you should note that many people in the Near East neighborhood and the West Side neighborhood are concerned about what's going on. And that I would suggest that the communication to the school board is that they do some neighborhood meetings like they promised. And when this whole process was going through, they promised neighborhood meetings to talk about various issues such as traffic, facilities, not just looks. So I would like to put that as a communication to the school board through our liaison.
Okay.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other communications from councilmembers? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports from other elected officials. Law Director Eliasson. And we have our Treasurer, Mary Ann McClure, if you'd like to go ahead and give your report. Welcome. Good to see you. And she comes on a quarterly basis for us to report out on our income.
I gave you all a copy. I guess the most important number is how our total meets up with the projections, which you'll find in your bottom right-hand corner. The current net as of, interest income, as of June 30th was $102,033.84. The projections were a little higher than they probably should be. And I'm going to be working with the auditor's office over the next couple of weeks to start working out some revisions. And while the rates did go up for a little while, they've just gone down another quarter of a percent and probably will again before the Fed decides they're done. But in general, the investments that we have are doing well. You know, there's no specific problem there. It's just a matter of, we just need to revise the projections, I think. We'll probably be pretty close to where we were last year, somewhere in the $200,000 range, so.
Okay. So at least not lower. Yep.
Yeah.
Good to know.
No, the bonds that we invested in through U.S. Bank are doing quite well, so.
Great. Any questions from councilmembers or the mayor?
And what's on the back is just the summary page from the June bank reconciliation, just to give you a little bit of an idea about where the funds are at present.
Good. Thank you. It's good to have the update, yeah, because we had noticed that revenues were down from projections a little bit, so. Good to know you all are looking at it. Thank you very much. Mayor Patterson.
I have a few items for council this evening and the viewing audience with street improvements. Just to kind of update everyone, the following streets for annual paving, annual paving. Cable Lane, Carroll Road, Columbus Road, High Street, Hillcrest Drive, Hooper Street, Richland Avenue, South Schaefer Street, Stimson Avenue, West Washington Street, West Green Canyon between Grovesner and Irvine Halls, North Ridge Drive, South Green Drive, and Cantor Hall Alley. Again, a lot of those are OUs repaving, areas that they needed to have repaved. This week, we started on Richland Avenue, Schaefer Street up to the Hawking River. Schaefer Street also began today, or yesterday, not today. That's Richland Avenue to Union Street, South Schaefer from Field Drive to South Convo Drive, Carroll Road, that's Roxbury Drive up to Dove Drive. We're having that done. And again, as council knows, a lot of this is weather-dependent as they're milling and more importantly, laying down asphalt for good bonding. So I'll continue to give council updates as our contractor moves throughout the city in hitting our repaving. Court Street and Washington Street sidewalk work's going to be going on. Precision Concrete Cutting Incorporated is milling some of the rather high heaves in our sidewalk in the uptown area, and we're kind of excited about this. Where it's not really milling, it's going to be concrete sawing but leveling out a lot of the irregularities in the sidewalk. I've instructed this Director of Engineering and Public Works to try to accomplish as much as possible. First, they were just going to do a couple of the blocks in the uptown area, and I said, well, we have them here, and you've got the budget, let's get as many as possible done. So you'll be seeing the first phase of this, like I said, Tuesday, August 20th is when that's going to happen, so tomorrow. Fire hydrant flushing, testing and flushing is still going on on East State Street. They're going to be working, they started today, and they'll wrap up on August 23rd. That's East State Street surrounding the area between Route 33 and Euclid Drive. Just as a reminder to people, our water is great water. When we do this fire hydrant testing, sometimes it does stir up sediment, but your water is still fine and very safe. Go read our CCR if you have any concerns about water. But just know that that is likely the cause if you do have some slight coloration changes in your water.
And the CCR is the Consumer Confidence Report.
Yes.
And I think it's on the city website, and it lists all the chemicals and things and the safety levels.
He was sent out to everybody.
I got a copy.
As a requirement of the clean water.
Hard copy, yeah.
Yes.
As required by all communities, part of our amazing Clean Water Act that the nation has because we care about our clean water.
Two other updates for council. We were, and this makes me feel so good. We were successful in hiring two new additions to the City of Athens. The first one is for the Assistant Director down at Engineering and Public Works. We were able to hire Ronald Cross. Ronald Cross is coming to us from Belle Prue, Ohio, where he served as the Service Safety Director slash Public Utility Director for the City of Belle Prue. So, again, that's, for us, the other hire that we had was David Riggs. David Riggs comes to us from, or will be coming to us, from Mason, Ohio, which is just outside, as some of you know, the Cincinnati area. He served there as the Public Works Director, and he will be moving into the role of the Director for the Code Office. Another interesting thing about David and his resume is that David holds a professional engineer's degree. So he's a licensed PE, which brings our grand total for the City of Athens of professional engineers up to four.
Yeah. Wow.
So, and it's, his background is really interesting, and, you know, more to come on some things that we could be doing at the Code Office that we currently aren't doing. So, anyway, when you see them out and about, please introduce yourselves to them. I might ask them to come to council for maybe our next regular session to meet with council as well as meet the viewing audience. I do want to recognize Councilmember Fall, the questions that you asked of me, and I am always open to engaging on all levels, you know that. And the same with Councilmember McGee, that I jotted down notes on what you're asking, and I will certainly get that information to you.
Thank you.
You're both welcome. Yes.
Have they started? Have the two gentlemen started?
They will start on Monday.
Monday, thank you.
They will start on Monday.
Great. Good news.
It's great news.
Good. All right. We'll move on to ordinances for first reading. 8319 is an ordinance amending Ordinance 3219, authorizing 2019, street paving and repairs introduced by Councilmember Cotsus.
President, nicely, thank you. We spoke about this last week at committee, and this is our annual paving ordinance. There were a few questions that were asked. Member Crowell, I believe, did you get your answer that the?
I did.
Okay. So the reason that we saw a reduction of close to $50,000 was that University, Ohio University, we work in partnership on this project together. They found out they didn't have to pave as much, so they reduced their overall total by about $50,000. So that's the change in the dollar amounts. The other thing that I've had in conversation over the week is, I did have from Director Hetty that the streets were, the street paving was going to be the same, but looking back on the list that we received at the Streets Tour, there, I haven't had a chance to check all of them, but there are some that are not on there that were on there that are not, no longer on there, for example, like Banbury. And so I'm, and I will send another email out, looping everyone in, asking how we got from point A to point B, because I know that there was some time between those two. So that's all I have on this ordinance at this time.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Any question or comment?
Yes.
I remember on the Streets Tour, the list that we were given included Carroll, which I took to mean the entire length of the street, and Dove.
Carroll is on there.
But that's only a small part.
Carroll's on.
Carroll is on in its entirety, I believe.
Okay. It's listed under alternate A on this spreadsheet, yeah. Well, good question. And we're at our first reading, so we can verify some of these other things. If there are any other questions?
This is Carroll Road.
Yeah. Carroll Road.
What I have, and this is what I had mentioned to council just a minute ago, is Carroll Road, Roxbury Drive to Dove Drive.
Correct. I see that as the, as a third road down in the attachment that was sent out.
Right.
Right. But it also says Carroll Road, Old Parish, Roxbury.
Okay.
Yeah, I know.
So we've got something to clarify in the next few weeks, then. Thanks for the question. Ordinance 8419 is an ordinance closing park place, West Mulberry Street and a portion of Court Street on Wednesday, September 18th, 2019, with a rain date set for Thursday, September 19th from 4 to 8 for a barbecue sponsored by the Joint Police Advisory Council, known as J-PAC. And this is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President, nicely. This is the event that I mentioned last weekend in committee. It's the annual Joint Police Advisory Council barbecue, and this is a really great event that welcomes members of the community, members of the student body, and gives us all an opportunity to interact in a casual setting with members of our local law enforcement teams. And it's right outside of Baker Center, and this ordinance is just authorizing the street closures and restrictions on parking to allow for that.
Okay. Great. Any questions or comments? Okay. Ordinance 8519 is an ordinance amending the 2019 appropriation ordinance and is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. Let me read the proposed ordinance here. Section 1, the 2019 appropriation ordinance, 14018, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriate balance the following sums: $20,000 to Street Fund, 220, transaction code 300, for dead and dying tree removal; and $65,000 to Community Development Block Grant, RLF Fund, 248, transaction code 300, for demolition of condemned unsaved houses; and $500 to Garbage Fund, 760.636, transaction code 600, to process refunds and increase in the total appropriations by set amounts.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Fall?
There's been a lot of discussion about, in the county, about the land bank and what they're doing with houses and properties that are delinquent, like severely delinquent with their taxes. I think that it's important to, when governmental agencies go forward with these sort of actions, such as demolition, that all the other processes that we have for transparency and the ability for citizens to address the concerns that they have are being followed. And this is a very long process. It's not the government going in and doing willy-nilly, we want your property or we want that property, that there is a process, process has gone on, and that these, the individuals who own or manage these properties have had ability and have had the opportunity to be able to go and rectify these sort of things. Many times, these sort of unsafe houses turn into dens of inequity, sort of thing, drug dens, you know. Hopefully, we don't have those sort of things in Athens. But I think that it's important to say that we have transparency and we go through a process when we do this. Thank you.
Thanks for the comment. Yes, Councilmember Grace?
I just want to clarify, in this particular instance, the houses that are proposed to be demolished with this fund, the city is not then going to have ownership of the lots after demolition if this process is approved. Is that correct?
I'm sorry?
Well, the city will not then, there's, we're not acquiring.
We are not.
So it is, the land will remain in the current owner's name.
Correct.
It's just a process through which the city is able to.
Remove.
Remove an unsafe property that is not able to be occupied. And I absolutely want to see the removal of these properties, but I want to say that I do have some concerns about using CDBG funds for this process. And I, so when, I would, I would like for the CDBG funds to be used to improve access to affordable housing or to improve properties that could be occupiable. And just on the Affordable Housing Commission, we've been spending a lot of time talking about what options the city has for doing that. And I know that there, we don't know, or this may be a question for the Law Director, have we received approval to use CDBG funds for this process?
I believe that Auditor Heck has been in contact with officials at the state level.
And so my understanding from committee last week was that there was a process yet to determine whether or not the state-level individuals think that this is an appropriate use of these funds. But I really think that as a city with limited resources, obviously, we have to decide what is the most appropriate use of those resources. And I, I'm not saying that I'm absolutely opposed to using the funding for this purpose, but it's something that I have concerns about, and I want to dive a little bit deeper into what other options we might have. So that's.
Okay. Thank you for the comments. Okay. Mayor Patterson?
I'd like to speak to that. The revolving loan fund has, is fairly healthy in terms of the revenue that is there, and to demo a hazardous condition property is permissible under CDBG revolving loan fund because currently, the way it's been going, which is, I believe, even more difficult when it comes to the general fund, is, you know, to demo, in particular, you know, the one that we did demo up on 129 North Lancaster, that money came straight out of the Code Office's budget to demolish that house. And I believe it was somewhere around $8,000 or $9,000 to do so. Whereas with the CDBG fund, it is a permissible use to demo a house so that you're making that neighborhood safer for those who live there. It's also cleaning up blight, which enhances others who live nearby, that it's going to be a positive for those who live there. And a lot of these homes that we have identified are in areas where I believe it would certainly be helpful from a CDBG revolving loan fund use of those dollars. You know, there's other things we certainly can explore for that money in other ways.
I don't know, would it, could it be made available to council, what the list of properties is?
Oh, absolutely.
I would, I think I know, one of them is the Southern Lancaster Street property.
Correct.
And perhaps a Brown Street property. But I would, I would like to know exactly which properties, and then what are the possibilities of recovering these funds from the property owners, like, in a realistic sense?
Sure.
And if, and how, is that attached to the property taxes?
It will be.
And then eventually, could it perhaps become city property if, I mean, if they're not paying to maintain the property but are just paying the minimal, like, the property taxes? That prevents the land bank or any other action. But I just want to know, well, then what's next if, with that money and with those properties?
Well, another thing that we could do is that, since it is a revolving loan fund, that we could essentially work out an agreement with the property owner with having it demoed, you know, especially if that house currently doesn't have any bank liens against it. And two of the ones that we are looking at that are on our list, they currently don't, and they're not in arrears on their property taxes at this point in time. Otherwise, to just to attach it, go through the normal process, again, like we did with 129 North Lancaster, to recoup our money with, you know, a lien on the property tax or attach it to their property tax, takes a long, 10 years or more to get that money back again, where this, we believe, we can get the money back at a much faster rate of return than we were before. I can certainly get you the list of houses if you're interested.
And any information about how that, how that process works as far as the recovery of those funds?
Correct. Well, we'll be working closely with the Law Director when we go through this process.
Councilmember Crowell, did you have?
Yeah, I was just, I'm interested in this information, too. I've heard a lot from neighbors in Ward 3 about individual houses that are abandoned and falling in, and they want to know why, why those properties aren't being dealt with. And I'm told, and I don't have any factual information, that one house in question is owned by an insurance company. I don't know how that changes any of these conversations, but I think we kind of talked about this a little bit last week in council, in the committee meetings. But if you could provide that list, that will help us with, engage with the.
I will. I mean, we've identified four houses, and so you know of others that are out there.
This is a house on Briarwood Avenue that has got the front roof taped in.
That one has, is a real challenge in terms of that particular property. That one is one. I'll get that information to council for the other homes. So now that you mentioned that one, I believe there's five that we're tracking right now. And you may have seen that we have that red X.
Yes, on the door.
Placard on the door. And what that is, is that is put on that home so that the fire department, if they had to arrive unseen because one of these was on fire, they know that that's not a safe structure to enter into either, so they won't go into it. They'll fight the fire from outside, but they will not go inside, and that's safety for our safety services or police.
Good. Thanks. Good questions and comments, especially as we're looking at affordable housing and that whole issue for the community. Yeah, so, good. Thank you. We'll look forward to the additional information.
Thank you.
8619 is an ordinance authorizing a delinquent debt collection agreement between the Ohio Attorney General and the City of Athens Income Tax Department, and is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. Allow me to read the pertinent sections of the ordinance because there are several attachments. The ordinance reads, "Whereas said agreement will establish a partnership with the Ohio Attorney General to collect delinquent tax amounts owed to the City of Athens, and whereas the Income Tax Department has confidence that this program will assist in the collection of balances that are still outstanding after our in-house collection attempts have been unsuccessful, be it ordained by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio. Section 1, the City of Athens Income Tax Department is hereby authorized to enter into a delinquent debt collection agreement with the Ohio Attorney General. A copy of said agreement is attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference. And Section 2 of this ordinance shall be in full force at the effect of the earliest moment permitted by law." Just to make sure everyone understands, this is a new program set up with the state attorney general. It's not the program that we had a few years ago, the CCD program. It is, it's not the program that we had a few years ago, the CCD program, which went out and checked for delinquent taxes to the city. This is a different program, so. But as I understand it, this doesn't cost us anything. So.
From the state?
From the state.
It won't cost us anything, but it will be an administrative fee, I believe, that will be taken out of what we would have collected.
Right. But we're not putting anything up.
But if we aren't getting any of the money back, then that's.
Right. Exactly. If they don't collect it, we don't pay.
That's right. Any questions? Any additional questions or comments? Okay. Thank you. Ordinances for second reading. 7519 is an author, an ordinance authorizing
Excuse me? 8719, I think we skipped that.
I'm sorry. You were right, absolutely. An ordinance of, so another, a remainder, a remaining first item, first ordinance reading. An ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 29 Housing Regulations, Section 29.09.02, penalties. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you. This ordinance comes under Planning and Development Committee. The last session that we had, I was in the planning committee, and we discussed it. But since our chair is now here, I can yield the floor to her to read it, if she so desires.
You can read it.
Okay.
Since you're here.
All righty. Section 1, Athens City Code Title 29 Housing Regulations, Section 29.09.02, penalties, is hereby amended to read as follows. 290902 penalties, any person violating a provision of this, and this is the changes, a code is struck out, and it says, chapter on a first offense shall be deemed guilty of a minor misdemeanor and fined not more than $100. A second offense within a two-year period shall be deemed a misdemeanor of the fourth degree, punishable by not more than 30 days in jail and a fine of not more than $250. A third offense within a two-year period shall be deemed a misdemeanor of the third degree, punishable by not more than 60 days in jail and a fine of not more than $500. Any fourth offense within a two-year period shall be deemed a misdemeanor of the second degree, punishable by not more than 90 days in jail and a fine of not more than $750. Each calendar day such violation continues shall constitute a separate and complete offense.
Thank you. I would like to speak to this. I think that one of the things that people are frustrated in the City of Athens about is the ability for the, for the city to be able to look at these places and enforce the code on them. I think a lot of people think that landlords just get away with things. And I think this process, because it's individual days, each day is a new offense, so every day they're getting a new fine, will maybe wake up some of the people in, some of the landlords in the city. And I think that there are other processes, like this whole process should be made available on the city website about who is being fined, who is being, having code violations on, on their property, because then it could help citizens identify places that they may not want to live. And I, and this is a process to help ensure that the health, safety, and welfare of all our, of all our citizens, be they renters or homeowners, are protected. And so I think we should go forward. I think that there's some administrative things that could go along with it, such as a landlord-wide email, so that we can let landlords and property owners know that there's changes in some of the code that will affect them. I think that there's some other things that we can do to help even the score with a lot of the landlords and tenants, to make sure that people have the, the information that they need in order to make a wise consumer option of whether to rent from A or rent from B. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Grace.
Just to be sure that I'm understanding this correctly, the chapter would apply to any owners of properties in Athens, whether it is an owner occupied or a rental occupied? Is that correct?
This provision is rental.
It's only for rental?
Right. Where there's a rental inspection.
Okay. Thank you.
And Councilmember Crowell, and then we'll have the mayor.
I just want to clarify, I think that the current code still, it still, it still is each day that a person continues to violate a provision of this code shall constitute a separate and complete offense. So the change is more ratcheting up the misdemeanors and the fines. It, it has been this way for a while, and if people still ignore this, they still are getting a violation every day they allow it to continue. So it doesn't change that.
And, and we did have some effective use of increasing trash fines, and people began to pay attention
We did.
to that. So, yes. Mayor Patterson.
Council, you asked me to kind of walk you through the process at the committee meeting last week. And so Lance Ellison put this together for me. And basically, step one is inspection of the property. Step two is notice of violation sent to the owner/authorized agent, given 30 days to correct the violations. Step three, if violations are not corrected, order to comply, sent certified to the owner/authorized agent for the property, given an additional 15 days to correct the violation. Step four, violations still not corrected, turned over to the law director to start the process of filing charges, having up to 30 days to file the charges. Step five, once charges filed, the court date is set. And step six, then in court, you know, hands guilty, not guilty, warrant issued, et cetera, to the individual. The other thing I want to mention to council, because, again, you did ask about this as well, is that, and, 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 and,[1088.51] And I agree with the President of council. That was something that we all worked on when I was on council, when it came to trash, to where we did the same thing, to where every day you could incur another violation for trash or litter in your yard, on your property. And the fines went up with each one of those issuances.
So it does have, so it's up by two and a half months, is what?
Correct.
Correct. So we've got the 30-day, the 15-day, the other 30 days. It's two and a half months, then the charges can be filed, yeah. Councilmember Paul.
I'd like to point out that in many instances, people are still living in the abode as this process is going on, because they moved in under a previous rental permit. I would suggest that such renters should put their rent in escrow, because they're living in an unsafe condition, obviously, because they've gotten some kind of, the property owner has gotten some kind of citation. Some of these could be minor, but otherwise they could be major. And we have to make sure that tenants in these situations are notified of the situation, and that they have the ability to have some kind of rectification for them not living in a hovel. So I think that we need to look at this further, and some kind of notification part of it. And, you know, ability, if a property owner has so many days of problems, being against the, whatever it's called, that contracts may be null and void, because renters have very little opportunity and very little resources to be able to fight for their rights. And we've seen situations where this is. I know people who live in complete hovels, which are unsafe, but because of the process, that takes a long time, two and a half months could be, you know, a long time for somebody to be able to live in a situation that there's holes in the floor, or the electricity isn't working, or other things, which presents a danger. So that would be something that we need to look forward.
Law Director Alison, do you have a comment?
I would like to clarify this provision. So right now, if someone has a code violation, and the code office comes to our office, and we file a minor misdemeanor, criminal offense, then it is a criminal offense, and we have to prove it beyond a reasonable doubt. So we could actually file for each and every day the offense continues. So we have, when filed, we get a conviction, and usually the judge orders them to somehow remedy the situation, fix the property, whatever. So there's a conviction. So let's say, within three months, there's another violation. Then that could be the fourth-degree misdemeanor, and that's how it goes up. On conviction, then rather than keep convicting them of minor misdemeanors, we can start having jailable offenses. And I think that that's where this came from. There are a group of city officials who are meeting regularly and talking about the top homes or the top rentals that need to be addressed. And the mayor can give you that list. And that's where this idea came from, that we needed more leverage, not just a $100 fine, or $100 every day. Somebody who lives out of state could just keep paying the $100. And that has happened, rather than fix the property. So this way, upon conviction, then we can make it a fourth-degree misdemeanor that could be 30 days in jail. And then there's another violation, you know, the jail time is up.
Is that list public? Is that a public document? The list of properties that people are looking at?
A conviction would be, certainly.
Right.
Yes.
That list you mentioned.
Public. Oh, of the properties that we're looking at?
Yeah.
I think it must be.
Runs its record.
Yes.
Runs its record, right.
But it's just a list of properties, the ones that you were speaking of are on that list.
Could we print that, put it on the website?
It's a document that's been generated and passed around the city among officials, not necessarily to council, so...
The council wants to see the list.
Councilmember Grace.
Yeah, I'd love to see that list.
Yes, I think it would be of value to the members of council to see that list. But also, just for renters or prospective renters who are out there, anyone can go to the Office of Code Enforcement and ask to see the record of inspections and violations for any of the properties that are currently registered rental properties in the City of Athens, that it is public record and it is available. You can go and request those. Right, so it's...
Maybe we should make that request available online, so that people who are coming into the city renting houses, such as students, can do the due diligence of, as a tenant, to be able to inspect the places that they may live. And then that way, they don't have to be physically in Athens in order to do it. It's public record, it should be public access.
If I could interject, I can, I see where you're going with that, but to do that with those thousands and thousands and thousands of records, it would have to be entered into some form of...
It would have to be digitized.
...web-centric, cloud-centric database. Who's going to pay for that?
Right, that's where, I don't know, but I would guess that if an individual calls Code Enforcement and requests the records, that they could be made available remotely that way. But they're not all digital records.
No, we're very analog.
And to be able to do an online search for them.
Other cities do this. It's not rocket science, and I understand...
Actually, it really is kind of rocket science.
To have a searchable database of permits, right now you go into a file, and you cannot search by name of landlord. You cannot, you can only go down this file, which is by street. And that really wouldn't be that difficult to get a searchable database by all the people who own certain, you know, so if you hear rumors about bad landlords, that you can see all the land, you know, see all the apartments or houses that they have.
This sounds like an interesting idea and a discussion with the new code director. Maybe a mature job for several years. But it is a good idea to have it accessible, so... But right now, we're looking at the fines right now, and how to make it more enforceable for our city code inspectors and for city administration. So this is good, this is a good first step, so thank you.
And I have a question about how the administration passes on new information to all the landlords on these things? Is there a...
I don't know if we have a master list of landlords. We probably do down at the code office, so I will certainly work with our new director, and we can pull something together. And then we would send it out, contact them all. We can send them hard, or, you know...
Don't they read the legal notices in the messenger?
I know.
Wouldn't that be great?
I do know this.
That's all the law requires.
Yeah, code office does send out emails. Like, all landlords were notified via email when there were changes to the permit fees. And all landlords are notified via email when their code inspections are scheduled, so...
So we can get that out. As soon as council passes this, we can make sure that gets out to them. I hear you with the digitization of documents. I only ask council, how much of the budget that goes to the code office do we put towards a process like that? It's not an inexpensive endeavor to do something like that. But I hear you. I'm not challenging it. I'm just saying, and I agree with President Isley, is that, you know, this could be a process over several years to have this done. But we're going to leave that up to the new director for the code office.
Thanks. Okay, we'll move on to ordinances for second reading. 7519 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute a mutual aid agreement between the City of Athens and the City of Dayton, introduced by Councilmember Butler. And if no comments or questions, we'll move on to the next one. 7619 is an ordinance amending Ordinance 9118, authorizing design engineering services associated with the City-County Sewer Expansion Project Number 317, introduced by Councilmember Butler. No comments or questions, we'll go on to the next one. 7719 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to renew a lease agreement with Ohio University. And if no comments or questions, we'll move to the next. 7919 is an ordinance accepting the petition for annexation of approximately .74 acres located on Hillcrest Drive, and is introduced by Councilmember Paul.
I ask that we suspend the rules this evening. There is a timeline that's coming up for this particular process.
Second.
We have a motion in second for suspending the rules. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Paul.
We've talked multiple times about this. This is a needed annexation to enable better management of resources and management of infrastructure that is in that area.
And so you're moving approval?
I move that I approve.
And do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in second for approval of this ordinance. Any other comments or questions about it? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 8019 is an ordinance amending the 2019 appropriation ordinance, and is introduced by Councilmember Reisner. If no questions or comments, we'll move on to 8219, which is an ordinance providing for the issuance of $460,000 of notes by the City of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of renewing notes previously issued to pay part of the costs of improvements to the municipality's sanitary sewer system and declaring an emergency, and is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules for 8219. The reason for the suspension is that the note is due on August 30th, and we're running out of time. We're not going to have another council meeting to do a third reading.
We have a motion in second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt 8219. And this is a note that's due. We're paying money on our sanitary sewer system, and the debt needs to be serviced, so...
We have a motion in second for approval of 8219. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ordinance, the motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. We have a resolution now for first reading, and this is R 719, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. This is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
This is one of those things that we have to do every year. As I've explained in the past, the City of Athens boundaries occupy the majority of the land area of Athens Township and a portion of Canaan. Consequently, we derive some tax, property tax income from the county in order to maintain the roads, bridges, streets, and so on, that would normally fall under the care of the various township trustees. So the commission, every year, gets together, and they hash out how much we're going to get and the county will get, and this is the result. So now we have to have a resolution to accept it so that we can get our share.
And for Athens Township, the amount is about $933,000, $934,000. And for Canaan Township, it's $38,907.
Correct. Canaan's always very small.
Right, so close, over $900,000.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, we'll move on to announcements and other business, one of which is the acceptance of the auditor's July 2019 financial reports. Could I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, the report's been approved. And I believe, Councilmember Crowell, if you have a...
Yes, I have two appointments, so I would like to make a motion to accept the recommendation to the Environment and Sustainability Commission of Sarah Conley Baloo. Sarah's Program Director of Sustainable Energy Solutions at Rural Action. She has reported to the Environment and Sustainability Commission on clean energy and projects over the past four years. As a citizen with a significant experience and expertise in environmental sustainability, Sarah will add value to the Environment and Sustainability Commission by supporting ongoing efforts to meet the goals of the Athens Sustainability Action Plan, providing input on plan revisions, and attracting new opportunities for the city to pursue.
I second. She's awesome.
Okay, so we have a motion and second. And do you have a second?
Do we do them separately, or do we do them together?
I think we can do them both together as one motion.
Okay, and the second member to be recommended is Austin Babro. Mr. Babro is a professor in the School of Communication Studies with interests in environmental and health communication. He's been very active in local efforts to protect the environment, and he's interested in assisting the city with developing sustainable practices.
So we have a motion and a second for approval of the appointment of these two members to the Environmental and Sustainability Commission.
I just want to say, I think we're extremely lucky to find this kind of talent and put it to use.
And we thank them.
You bet.
That's great, okay, thank you. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I bet they'll be non-opposed, but I'll ask. So the motion's approved for their appointment. And we will have committees next week, and so if people planning, okay, of the whole. And Councilmember Crowell, yes?
Sorry, one more piece of communication. I would like to thank the outgoing members of the Environment and Sustainability Commission. Mr. Richard Lynn Scott chaired the commission since I joined it, and I'd like to thank Richard for his service. As well as Kristen Rice has been on the commission for a number of terms, and we thank her for her service. And finally, Jessica Delzell was the student representative, and we thank her. And we have a new student who we will be presenting to the council for a recommendation in two meetings.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Excellent, okay. Yes, and I think everyone would wholeheartedly second that thank you, so...
Yes.
And so we've mentioned that we will have a committee of the whole next week with our committee meetings, and finance and personnel.
Yep.
So far, that's what we have, and perhaps others. So make sure and let our clerk of counsel know, yes.
Are we going to talk about Halloween anytime soon? It's coming. I know that we need to...
No.
I know, but we have a process here.
And it would be good to have that process, so we're not having just suspend the rules. So thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you.
If there's a way to bring that forward, submit even some preliminary information, that would be great. Thank you, appreciate it. And we do have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that were not covered on the agenda. Is anybody interested in three minutes? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
So move second?
Second, third.
We have a motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned at 7:58. Thank you so much.